Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School Board meeting from March 22nd, 2021. Quickly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for armed forces. And those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially remember the wife of Frank Guntie, the grandfather of Charles Rippenhauser, and Yorktown alum, Rob Kavivit. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to start with a public hearing on the district's safety, district-wide safety plan, kind of a motion to open the public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you, Jackie. There was recent legislation that required school districts to revisit their district-wide safety plans. And the essence of the revision is with regard to us identifying essential employees and ensuring that we have adequate PPE, personal protective equipment, for employees who are deemed essential employees. I'll turn it over to Tom Cole. Tom has led the district-wide committee on this and has some few more things to add to the.
Thanks, Dr. Hatter. We did indeed convene a district-wide committee to review the plans that we have in order to meet the mandate from the state to identify critical and essential employees in the event that the school district would have to close again for pandemic or any other reason. We have complied with that, and the updated plan reflects that. We did coordinate with other members of the committee and with the requisite union representation from across the school district. And those plans are in place, they're posted on the website for the community to see. And we will submit them to the state as soon as the board has an opportunity to adopt and receive.
Anybody in the board have any questions about the updated plan? Okay, because this is a public hearing, if anybody from the community would like to ask a question or have a comment about this plan only, you can raise your hand. Your screen name must match your name and that you're going to state, you must state your address. You have to be a Yorktown resident. Did anybody have any questions on the district-wide safety plan? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Removed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to adopt it now, or we're going to adopt it at the end?
You can adopt it now.
Can I have a motion to adopt the amendment to the district-wide safety plan for the 2021 school year?
Some move.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Now we're up to public comment on agenda-related items. The first public comment for agenda-related items is done by email. If you had a comment, we're going to ask that you have sent it to us by 4:00 PM. There is an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak live. Again, we're going to ask that anybody who does so has their name matching their, the screen name matching their actual name. So if you want to speak, please make sure you can change that now while we have the meeting. Event, did anybody send anything in?
No, I didn't receive anything.
Okay, thank you. So we're up to the superintendent's report. Ron, I'll send this over to you.
Thank you, thank you so much. This evening, I'll be giving two presentations. The first is another reopening presentation. I've been providing the board in our community with reopening updates at each of our Board of Education meetings. I'll continue to do that throughout the remainder of the year, especially as we re-enter, more of our students tomorrow marks the second first day for our kindergarten students. I'm so excited to be welcoming our students back to school. Our teachers are excited, our administrators, our staff are all really excited to welcome back our kindergarten students. And then we'll continue the phased reopening from there. Prior to delivering this presentation, I just wanted to share a couple of updates first with, I just wanted to clarify, the grant that we're working through with the Westchester Medical Center has not been awarded at this point. We've applied, we've been invited to apply, and we're excited by the invitation to apply for the grant with Westchester Medical Center to support the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students and to support our faculty and staff and build their capacity. The grant award, we understand, won't be announced now until June. We learned that today, that the awards won't be announced till June. We're excited for it, we're looking forward to the opportunity, and we'll continue obviously to support our students and our staff in the interim. And certainly, if the grant doesn't come to fruition, for whatever reason, we'll certainly mobilize to support our students and staff. With this past weekend, it was a beautiful weekend weather-wise. It was a beautiful weekend for so many reasons. And I want to share with our school community that we hosted a Food for All program in partnership with Feeding Westchester. So Shay spent the morning there, Mrs. Harowitz, and our wonderful school social workers and psychologists participated. It was absolutely terrific to see so many of our staff supporting such an important endeavor in our school district. We had so many different food items that we were able to provide to members of our community. Come one, come all. Our next event will be on April 17th, Saturday, April 17th, from 8:30 in the morning until 10:30 in the morning. You can come down the high school driveway, pull around to the middle school vein entrance. You don't exit your vehicle, you just open the rear trunk of the vehicle, and our staff will put the bags and the items into the trunk of the vehicle. So we encourage anyone and everyone to participate. Some people came from neighbors, some came from themselves. But ultimately, we were honored to be able to support our community in this way. And now I'll move into the reopening update that I planned for our board and for the community. So we're continuing all of the planning. I visited with our elementary schools this afternoon, specifically Brookside and Mohansick. The planning is coming along well. I'll share some pictures that we took today so that there can be some more of an insight into the classrooms and how some of the desk structures will take place. Cafeteria, we'll talk about that tonight, lunch. I've received a couple of emails over the weekend about the revised CDC guidance. I just want to share that I'm pleased with the CDC guidance. It affirms some of the decision-making that we are taking on as a district, but it's a New York State Department of Health policies that govern. So we saw, they haven't caught up with the CDC guidance at this point. We saw this when the quarantine durations changed. CDC had changed their quarantine duration guidance from 14 days down to 10 days. And it took a couple of weeks before the state DOH caught up to that policy. We're in a similar situation here where the CDC has announced guidance, and the DOH policy at the state level is still behind that. I think they're evaluating the recommendation, looking at the science behind it, and they'll be issuing specific guidance, but it's the state DOH that governs. The fully remote option is going to continue through the end of the year. We are anticipating a full reopening with all of our students back in person come September. So I'm getting questions, will a remote option be available in the coming school year? I think it's less and less likely that that will be the case as circumstances improve, as vaccinations become more widely available for people who qualify for them, at the very least. I am anticipating that we'll return to an all-in person. Obviously, if there is a mandate at the state level requiring us to offer a fully remote model, it's something that we'll certainly provide. I, the next update is rather than, many of you have been recipients of my almost daily emails about a COVID case, and there really were not great implications on the school day. There were instances where some people were quarantined, and we understand how disruptive that is. Rather than send out the notification, I was receiving emails from parents who were telling me that the number of emails that I was sending and the number of letters that I was sending was beginning to become overwhelming. And I agree, I actually agree with that sentiment. So what we did was we started a COVID dashboard on our website. Every case that arises in the district, we're going to report on that website, full transparency there. I actually think it's even a better practice than what we've been doing because it takes all the data and it presents it in one location. So you're able to see longitudinally, you're able to see holistically as a district, you're able to see building by building and the breakdowns there and an easier-to-read chart. So we've gone the route of a dashboard. I will not be sending out the nightly or the every-two-day or the as-needed letters. However, two things I'm going to assure you of. Number one, all of the contact tracing and notifications for contacts still continue. That hasn't changed. We're still performing the rigorous contact tracing. We're still contacting families whose children need to quarantine. And then the other part of this is if there is something that needs to be communicated, please know that I will email. So if there is something that needs to be communicated, an email from me will come out. And that's something that may affect the structure of the school day or if there's a school closure. Those emails are not going by the wayside, but we still continue to work through all of the COVID cases that are coming through the district. The reopening schedule is unchanged, we're still on target, we're still on pace. We received a partial order of the barriers. It was a very exciting day to receive the kindergarten barriers at this point. We have some more that have come in, and we're going to continue just working to install them. There is a little bit of assembly that's required. There is a little bit of just peeling off the protective barriers on the barrier. But we are looking forward to beginning the phase in tomorrow with kindergarten at Brookside and Mohansick. And then we have the recess coming up in four days. And then after that, we'll be welcoming back additional students once we reopen for in-person learning. Just a reminder that the Tuesday that we return, I believe that's April 6th, we are not going to have students in grades one through five attend. The teachers are going to need that as preparation time to welcome back the full classrooms of students. The icebreaker conversation that I've had with more than one kindergarten, first grade, and second grade student is I sit at my desk on A-Day, and my friend has the desk on B-Day. Who's getting the desk on Tuesday when we all come back? And that has been a great, great debate amongst our youngest learners, our kindergarten students. Who gets my desk? And the answer, and I'll share with the community now because we have to have an answer to this, we're mixing up all of the desks. They're all being disinfected, they're all being mixed up. So you're getting your desk. That's the desk that you're getting, is your desk. So we're excited to be welcoming back our kindergarten students. I'll be on the campuses tomorrow, just really looking forward to this. I'll share some pictures of a kindergarten classroom, just so our community can know what to expect tomorrow. I wanted to share, these are some pictures inside of Brookside. We haven't shared too many photos inside of the school buildings, just for no other reason that we just hadn't shared those. So I wanted, our board certainly did a walkthrough, and they were able to inspect the facilities prior to the opening of school. Top left is a handwashing station. We have those scattered throughout the district. It's not just at the elementary schools, it's in all of our schools. The signage on the floor, you can see how clearly marked the signage is. Bottom left, the water fountains are turned off. There are only bottle fillers with hand sanitizing stations nearby. We have one bottle filling station per 100 students enrolled in the school. We have strategic entrances, so bottom right, you'll see specific entrances. That's at Mohansick that we use for different grade levels of the school. So it really is a pretty thoughtful operation. And then all of the mitigating strategies are still listed on the left. I do want to share, actually, we'll go to the next slide, Eva, thank you. Community transmission is something that we're watching. The biggest predictor of cases in the schools are cases in the community. That is just the reality of our situation right now. I think that's what every expert has told me, that if we can understand the participation, the transmission in the community, that'll help us to forecast transmission within the schools or infectivity within the schools, not necessarily transmission within the school. So we're seeing, if you take a look at the right side of that graph, that was from today on our town website, on the right side of that graph toward the bottom, you can see it inching back up. So for the past week, our numbers have been increasing in town. I'm not overly concerned at this point. I don't know if there's enough to say that there's a trend happening, but it's something that we're certainly watching. We watch the numbers daily, we watch them by zip code, we watch them just by county, by town, and then we take it down to the zip code level. So these are things that we're watching. I would just continue to ask members of our community, we're going to keep your children safe while they're in our buildings. We have so many different protocols. Your children and the children of our district are wonderful, wearing their masks in school. They are absolutely terrific with the mask-wearing in school. And I visit all of our schools. I'm out and about, and I do see our students are so wonderful with the masks. Outside of school, I would just encourage the same safe behavior. Outdoors is better than indoors, and I think everyone knows what what the science says, outdoors is better than indoors. Be mindful of the contact, but we want to keep the schools open. And we know that on the inside of our school buildings, all the safety protocols are going to be followed. And we just encourage safety outside of school as well. If someone in the house isn't feeling well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. This has come up twice in the past week. If someone in the house has a COVID test outstanding, the children should be kept home. If there's reason to suspect that COVID is in the house, please keep the children home, contact the health office of your child's school. I just ask for your partnership on this. We, we want the children in school. We absolutely want the children in school. If someone is ill and there's a suspicion that COVID may be part of that illness, please keep the children home. We'll work through the details with the health office. We'll make sure the makeup work gets sent home, and the children should stay home until a negative result is received by the individual who is awaiting the results. And it's just that mutual responsibility that we have to one another as a school community. I send my children to school expecting that everyone else will make responsible decisions. You send your children to school expecting that I'll make responsible decisions and so on and so forth. It's a great partnership, and it really is an effective partnership. Transportation, I just want to reiterate this. I shared it during the past presentation. There will be at least one child in a seat on the bus. In most cases, there will be two children. I shouldn't say most cases. In many cases, there will be two children on a seat in the school bus. I share that with you, I give you the information so that you can make the best decision that you can for your child. I do anticipate there will be increased quarantines. If there's a sibling attending the same school, they should be on the bus together and sit together. Window seats kind of get you away from the aisle, so that's helpful. I found myself on a school bus this past week actually measuring distances on the specific bus that children rode so that we didn't have to wrongfully quarantine students. And I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to do that. But I do want to share that the expectation of, well, you're going to sit them every other row because that's six feet. We don't have the capacity on the bus to do this. We won't know until actual ridership numbers come in, and we have actual data based on the arrival at school on the ridership. But based on the survey, we anticipate there being one to two children per bus. That's not limited to the elementary level. We're seeing that on the middle school level and on some of the buses at the high school level, although the ridership at the high school level is lower than at the other four schools. We are opening windows, we are opening the roof hatches for ventilation. There's a disinfection schedule, the masks are required on the bus. But irrespective of masks, irrespective of the windows, if your child's within six feet of someone who's COVID positive for more than 10 minutes, 10 or more minutes, they are going to be quarantined. So I just want to be as transparent as possible with our school community on the transportation piece. At arrival, just want to share patience. We've had a couple of fender penders in the, in the parking lots, and I just want to emphasize patience. We all want to get the children in, we want our day to get started, we want you to go about your day. We just ask for your patience, and thus far, everyone has been terrific. Our community has been absolutely wonderful. We just want to emphasize the patience here because we do anticipate more traffic. We've already met with the Yorktown Police Department to discuss the middle school, high school campus because that is, believe it or not, with the two schools in relatively close proximity, it becomes a little bit of a challenge to coordinate, especially the dismissal. Arrival's a little bit less of a concern because everyone has a different arrival time for the most part. At dismissal, it's pretty, it's pretty steady, so we'll come to that in a moment. The instructional day, three to six feet apart, there will be quarantines. I've spoken to some of the other districts that have reopened fully in some of their grade levels, and they have experienced an uptick in quarantines just because the quarantine guidelines haven't changed. So if you're seating students three feet apart, it's conceivable that you're going to increase the quarantines because they're not seated six or more feet apart. You can go to the next slide, Eva, I just want to share a picture. This is a classroom, one of our kindergarten classrooms. It's set up, the barriers are affixed to the table. These are pretty substantial and prominent barriers. I put a red arrow, if you can see the screen, there's a red arrow to the left side of the screen. The barriers actually come out. They actually raise up a little bit, and they come out seven inches. They're so clear, and they're of such a good quality that it's actually difficult to see that they do bow out so that if a child turns left and right, there's barrier there. And in fact, the children are separated by two barriers, their own barrier and the one next to their neighbor. So, and you can actually see, if you look at the chairs, specifically the yellow chairs in the middle of this picture, you can see the spacing best with those two seats. You can see the spacing that we're having. That's a kindergarten classroom, still very welcoming. It's a really inviting environment that we have there. This is a picture of the cafeteria. This is at Brookside. I also want to thank the board and the steering committee of the board for your forward thinking in the design of the cafeteria this summer. The floor outside of being beautiful assists us with the social distancing as those clusters are approximately six feet of colors. So that was some really forward thinking by the steering committee of our board, and I thank you for that because that has been enormously helpful in us trying to space the students out as best we can. So it's an aesthetically pleasing design where if I'm looking down at that floor, I look down, I say, wow, that's a beautiful cafeteria floor. But the strategy and the thoughtfulness that went into the design of that floor to create these six-foot distances just naturally are enormously helpful. I do want to speak to the barriers that we're using in the cafeteria. If you notice, and I don't know if you can see this from the photo that was provided, the barriers extend to the seating area as well. So as students turn left, turn right, it's not just a tabletop barrier. I do want to thank publicly Dennis R. Boys, our Director of Facilities. Each one of these was made by hand because these had to be custom-made to fit the specifications of our tables. So we didn't simply want to have a barrier that sat on the table because what happened, students looks left, looks right, and there they are, and it really negates the purpose of the barrier. So we have these barriers custom-fitted, and our operations and maintenance staff took these four-by-eight polycarbonate sheets and cut these by hand to provide the barriers on our cafeteria so that the children can be in the cafeteria. I also want to share that we are able to, we've been able to put MERV-13 filtering in the cafeteria at the elementary schools at this point. We were able to accommodate, we're working through the last, the high school building, we're working through that. It's not air conditioning, but it's an exhaust system. It's a unit ventilator that's introducing fresh air into the space. In most of our classrooms, the rate at which air is changed over, we get one changeover of air every five to seven and a half minutes. That means the volume of air in the room is displaced with fresh air every five to seven minutes. So it's multiple times per hour. So in the span of a 40-minute period, there are about five air changes in a 40-minute period in a classroom. So we do have that same level of filtration in the cafeterias of of our schools as well, and we're excited to be able to welcome our students back. There still will be quarantines in the cafeteria. There will be some classes that will still eat in their classroom. We're working through some of the specifics. But the vast, vast, overwhelming majority of our students will be eating in the cafeteria. Some were working on outdoor locations for lunch. Again, that's a backup plan because it rains, it gets muddy outside, the weather's not always perfect. So we are looking at opportunities to have some classes go outside for lunch. Just lunch is still free for everyone. I just want to remind everyone of that. So when I go home today, my students are in on A-Day, so they get to go to school tomorrow. And if they're not happy with what's on the menu, I have to pack lunch and prepare lunch. Our menu has been so terrific, and the cafeteria staff has done a really nice job of designing a menu that interests our students, and it's free for all students. So the U.S. Department of Agriculture has introduced this program. It's through the remainder of the school year or until the money is run out. I don't anticipate the money's running out prior to the end of the school year, anything's possible. But I anticipate the free lunch program continuing through the end of the school year. So it's just a nice opportunity, and I share the cleanliness of our cafeteria at our last meeting. But they undergo three different safety inspections throughout the year from three different entities. So there are so many different, there's the Department of Health, there's Aramark, and then there are internal health inspections that are done. So the, the food is safely handled, it's clean, it's delicious, it's nutritious. And just, that's my plug for the free lunch program here. Update on dismissal, we're going to be putting out some times for arrival, specifically at the middle school and high school campus. We just don't have the bandwidth to accommodate the queuing of the cars in this lot with the 30 middle school buses that are here at dismissal. And then if we have athletic teams that are going out, that's five or six more buses that we have to accommodate. And then the volume of pickups is something that is on our mind. So we will be setting a minimal arrival time. Do not arrive before, and we'll be sharing that with the middle school community, specifically because that campus is just the most difficult to navigate in light of the 30 buses, the athletic buses for the middle school and high school that are on campus. So we'll be sharing more information, but that's, that's a little bit of ways away. Everything else stays the same. I was having a conversation with a parent who said, well, what time will the bus come now? Everything stays the same. So if your child was getting off of the bus at 3:00, they will continue to get off the bus at 3:00. First day, there may be some delays as children get re-acclimated to the stop and to the changes on the new day, getting off the stop. But by and large, to the minute is where your child should be getting off of the bus and arrival as well. Travel quarantines, I just want to share for everyone, faculty, staff, and our school community at large, the governor made a comment that the quarantines are going away. The domestic travel quarantines are going away effective April 1st. That's not true at this point. I anticipate it going away, but we don't have the guidance yet for that. Yes, it's on the governor's website, so we're awaiting the guidance. I anticipate that will come to fruition, but it's not official at this point. At this point, the domestic travel quarantines are still in place. So will they go away before April 1st? Likely that they will, but at this point, they have not, they've not gone away. With regard to finally, international travel quarantines, those still apply regardless of the governor's guidance. So I just wanted to share that for people who are traveling internationally. We've talked about this, no update on the quarantines, that remains. We've been asked, just if you're choosing to travel, I respect your decision to travel, just please understand that we may not have the staffing to provide your child with individual instruction during the travel. So I just want to share that piece. That question has come up that if we're going to go out of town, can, what's the protocol? The protocol is you're out of town. We'll provide some asynchronous work, we won't be able to provide live synchronous work. Students who are quarantined, we're working together on that second bullet to provide a largely asynchronous day with a live synchronous component. And then 6:12 on the next slide. We have a little more flexibility, 6:12. Next slide, Eva. This is new for our school district, and this is exciting. We're going to, we have a rapid COVID surveillance testing program for our faculty and staff. For our faculty and staff, we're going to be introducing an optional. And I'll say again, an optional COVID testing program for our students K twelve. There has to be a consent form, a parent and guardian. We're not going to test someone's child without them being present. So a parent and guardian would have to be present for the testing. Again, it's purely optional. It is, we're using, I'll share with the board, which you're aware, we're using the Abbott Binax now. Tests, they're rapid tests. It takes about thirty seconds to administer. It is a very shallow nasal swab. This go, this barely goes into the front of the nostril, five times around in each nostril. And then it's a fifteen minute result. So it's a very quick test thus far. Any student on whom we piloted this has, has responded really well and and has not really had a concern as a result. We are testing some of our high school students at this point. We are not going to be testing some thematic students. There, there may be, the, the, the student should really be assessed. The child should be assessed by their physician because there are other screening mechanisms that we just don't have. That a physician's office would have, but we are going to begin this later in the spring, certainly after the spring recess. Again, it's optional. It's not a condition for reentry. It's not a condition to enroll in school five days a week. It's not a condition. Uh, of anything enrollment related or participation related. It's optional and we're pleased to be able to provide that to our school community. And we've had this program up and running for faculty and staff. And fortunately, we have had terrific results returned where I think we're under one percent of, of anyone who's been tested. And I think only one test has come back positive at this point. It's been very limited. So the vast majority of tests have been negative, the overwhelming majority has been negative. So we're happy to offer just another opportunity for our students. There's no wait, it's quick, you're in and out in a few minutes and the results we call you in fifteen minutes with the results. So more information to follow, but I wanted to share that information. And a big thank you to Lisa Epstein and Kim Cortese, they are overseeing this program. And Lisa and Kim have been just absolutely dynamite. They've been so terrific. They're, they're two of the best school nurses I, I have ever come across and, and they've been wonderful. And seeing our testing program get off the ground and also our trainer Justin Mulyano has been terrific in working with our, with our high school students. So tomorrow it begins. Second first day of school. It's such an exciting opportunity. I was at Brookside today. The energy is palpable. I was at Mohansik today. The teachers were working just tirelessly. With their colleagues to make sure that we're schedule wise are prepared, facility wise, we're prepared. It's, it's an exciting time for us and I can't wait for Tuesday. I don't want to wish the break away, the spring recess away. But I, I really am looking forward to getting the rest of our students back in the coming weeks. So yes, I, I heard the CDC guidance. No, we, we're still not at the point where we can flip a switch and and just discard the state DOH piece. And all the other planning pieces that need to go into play. But we're excited about next steps forward. That concludes that presentation. But thank you for facilitating that part of it. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take those. Otherwise, I'm happy to proceed to the next presentation.
Well, I, Ron, I just wanted to, to thank you again. The presentation was thorough. It, it's amazing to see those barriers. It's one thing to talk about how you got to put them in. It's another when you see them and you really see the hard work that went into it. Between what you purchased and what our facility department was able to create is amazing. I also wanted to tell the community, we were very lucky to be with our elementary school principals before the meeting. And when I asked them how they felt about tomorrow, the joy in their faces, to be able to know they were welcoming the kids back was probably better than most first days of school. They're just so excited to have everybody back. So, I mean, it's, it's great to see them. It's great to know. So thank you. Anthony, Cheryl, Rashme, Peter, any questions, Tom?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good, thanks.
All right, we're good, Ron.
You, um, and, and we will have different configurations of the desks. That was a kindergarten class that I showed. I thought that was the most, um. Pressing example to show, so I will be showing different examples just to give our community some insights. That's to, well, how will the rooms look? What is my child walking into? And, and we'll be sharing some more information on that as, as it comes available. So we're going to transition to the next presentation. And that is the final superintendent's budget presentation. So, um, obviously our court's aware of this, but for the community at this point, it, it's regarded as the superintendent's budget. Where my team and I work to develop recommendations within the budget. This evening I will turn the budget over to the Board of Education. They'll go through the process of reviewing some of the recommendations that we're making. Looking at the tax rate impact and, and some of the, um, discussion points that we have. And then final determination will be made on April twelfth, when the board votes to adopt the budget. And it may look the way it currently is constituted. It may look a little bit different. There may be, um, some additional discussions that have to take place. And research that has to take place. But at this point, uh, I'm proud of what we've been able to put together and I'm proud to present this to our board this evening. So I've said this before, I don't know who coined this term, but I know that for the past ten years or so that I've been a district office administrator. I've used this in, in many of my budget presentations. I really do believe the budget tells the story of a school district. I, I, I think we get to see, um, some of the things that are great happening in our district. And some of the things that we're aspiring to do in our school district through the school budget. Our vision is consistent and we continue on this journey with our vision. And it's rooted in this idea of East Team. An empathy based approach. And you bet you can go to the next slide. An empathy based approach to steam instruction and steam instruction is so much more than just science, technology, engineering arts and math. It, it's, it's a way of thinking. It's an approach to education. It, it's. Oh, and it's an approach to creativity and innovation and problem solving and critical thinking and, and working together and researching. And on the next slide, I'm, I'm pleased to share that this idea that we had just a few years ago. Is now a nationally recognized, award-winning approach to teaching and learning. In fact, I included on the next slide. A picture of the certificate and it's one of the most, um, happiest and then most proud moments of my career. It's actually hanging in the background. You can see there are many plaques on the wall in my background here. The one I would say that means most to me is this one. Because this was just a vision and I recall being with our colleagues, all of our administrative colleagues sitting around a table, just kicking around this idea. And to see where we have come and to see this regarded as a national promising practice. Is really rewarding for all of us, for the entire school district. Our teachers have embraced the work. Our students have embraced the work, our families have embraced the work. This Board of Education has been so supportive of the work and, and I attribute so much of this to you and to your support. And I, and I thank you for that. Now, as we move on, it's, it's not just East Team, there's so many other wonderful things that, um, that I want to share with you this evening. So on the next slide, we'll see. We have a great instructional program. The outcomes rank among the best in the country, not just regionally. On the next slide, you'll see how generous our students are with their time. Raising money for so many wonderful causes. Our East Team approach has been. Highly regarded. We've actually had visitors from other countries come in to visit with us to learn a little bit more about East Team. Most recently, um, we had members of the South Korean Ministry of Education come in to see us and to visit with us. We met them at BOS's and were able to go through their questions and a presentation on, on East. Even I shared with them these two images. And for the board, you'll recall at one of our Board of Education meetings, we had the dirty water from the pond that went through a student made and designed filter. And Mrs. Harwich was brave enough to drink the water and, and we. I look at this picture and I just say, it really represents what we've tried to accomplish over these past number of years. And thank you to Ms. O'Shea for her leadership of our instructional program. Because she has been such a champion of the work and she's been such a wonderful champion of the work. With our building principals, with our teacher leaders, with our teachers in the classroom and, and I'm, I'm grateful for that. And then to the best business official in the state, maybe in the country. Tom has not said no to me when I come to him with a big idea for an investment in our East Team program. We, we've found a way to either reprioritize what we have in the budget. So that we can provide these opportunities to our students. The bottom picture I'll share with you, we have a new way of teaching Humpty Dumpty in kindergarten. We have high school students come down, we, unfortunately, we haven't been able to get this off the ground this year in light of the situation. But, um, the students designed protective casings for Humpty Dumpty. So that, um, our young engineers are engineering a protective case so that when Humpty Dumpty falls off the wall, his shell doesn't break. So what better way to test their designs and their thinking than to take the operations and maintenance bucket truck, raise it fifteen feet in the air. And actually drop the eggs in their protective case and, and reflect on what aspect of the design was successful. And what aspects of the design could be improved. So I'm, I'm just so proud when I see those two pictures because I think they represent so much of the, um, wonderful work happening in our district. We have opportunities for everyone in our school community, seventy co-curricular clubs and activities. Our fine and performing arts are outstanding. What a robust program we have in the arts. Uh, and it's just so accomplished and, and our students make me so proud with every concert, with every show. The, they're, they're absolutely amazing. Our athletic teams have done a remarkable job and honestly, I'll tell you, the most proud I am is with that last honor. Scholar athletes and so many of our teams are scholar athlete teams and that means so much to me. This year, well, last year, this year we're reflecting on it. This is, this is just last school year. This is one year. This is what Yorktown High School, which really is, the high school really defines a school district. And this was, this was just a year. Blue ribbon, New York State. Reward School, Newsweek Top STEM Schools and US News and World Report to America's Best High Schools. It's a pretty good last school year for our high school in this district. So that was a two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And it takes a great system to get the high school of any district to be where it is. This year's been a challenge. I, I think we all agree with that. It's been a challenge in so many regards and it's been a challenge for so many. Reimagining how education can look in a virtual environment and a remote environment and a hybrid environment. And in an environment where you can be in on one day, expect to be in the following day and schools are closed due to, um, myriad reasons. Our teachers have been remarkable. They really have embraced the challenge. And I wanted to share with you, part of the reason why I shared the picture on the bottom right is although I, I think there may be a. Just, I wanted to clarify, look at how beautiful the classrooms look. They're so welcoming to our students and they're so inviting for our students. And I really commend our teachers for creating such a wonderful space. Yes, the desks are far apart, they're spaced out, they, they absolutely are. Yes, the students are masked and it looks a little different. No, they're not sharing supplies. There are differences. But it's been a wonderful experience. I have not met the student who has said, or the parent who's told me that their child does not enjoy coming to school each day. And that's largely attributed to the wonderful faculty and staff in the buildings and this has not been an easy year. You bet you can go to the next slide. So in developing this budget, we had a charge. We wanted to continue to offer great programming to our students first and foremost. But we also want to be sensitive to our taxpayers and that's really important to us as well. So it's creating that balance. But there are so many different variables for us to contend with, especially this year. We, we don't know if the state budget will be completed on time and with that, we have uncertain revenues. There are mandates, it seemingly daily, there are mandates that we have to comply with. We're seeing enrollment needs. We're seeing enrollments jump, we're seeing needs jump. The pandemic, safety planning, Tom and I actually spoke about this earlier today. We've invested a fair amount of money in some equipment. Whether it's the barriers, whether it's the portable barriers, whether it's the hand washing rental stations that we, the stations that we've rented. Or the disposable equipment, the gloves, the masks, the antibacterial hand sanitizers that we have. The, um, the disinfection solution, those are all recurring costs that we have as part of opening schools in this new normal. And it is a new normal. And, and we continue to adapt to the new normal. Go to the next slide. But I don't want to lose sight of our charge. And it's always educating the whole child. And we see the child as so much more. They're beautiful little people. They're terrific in every way. They're scholars, they're great citizens. They're creative, they're builders, they're innovators. They're kind, they're athletes, they're musicians, they're artists. And we try to incorporate that in everything that we develop. I've used this quote on the next slide in the past and I think it bears repeating. Educating the mind without educating the heart really is no education at all. And our students, I believe, are experiencing that each day that they step into our buildings. Now, for the technical part of this presentation, we can go to the next slide event. This has been a really long process. While we've constantly had our eyes on the health and safety of our students and staff. And monitoring all that needs to be monitored to make sure that our students and staff are learning and working in a safe environment. We've had our eyes on the budget as well and the budget development and Tom and his team have done an extraordinary job in developing this budget. But the process begins back in November. I know we start the presentations in January. But we actually begin the discussions and Tom's process actually even begins before that, it begins before November. So we're meeting with all the department heads, all of the administrators in the district. We're hearing what their needs are, what their aspirations are for the schools, for their programs. And we're trying to balance that with what our reality is. And sometimes the two don't align perfectly. And we go through a process of budget presentations to the board and to our school community beginning in January. My presentation is this evening, obviously March twenty second, the board, the next step is the adoption, the budget hearing. And then certainly the budget vote and trustee election on May eighteenth. Now, the timeline, just the presentations that we delivered are all outlined here. They're all available on our website. The meetings are also available on our website as well. So if you're looking for context beyond the presentations to hear the discussion, to hear the questions. There's some, the board has done such a phenomenal job of asking questions that really stretch our thinking and really. Asking us to make sure that every stone is turned twice. So we had a great conversation on fuel oil. We had a great conversation on boat location. We had a great conversation on so many areas that the board initiated. And I'm actually going to follow up on one of those areas later on in the presentation, but before that event, you can go to the next slide. Our enrollment, this is where we've been. You'll see a slight decline. It, it always seems to happen that during the course of the new school year, we get new students to come in. To our district with this year was no different. We are expecting new developments. To come online at some point. There are various stages of development, but we are expecting that. It's something that we're actively considering and working toward and planning for. We have our study from Dr. Saversky to help us with the enrollment. We have been, um, in communication with the town to hear a little bit more about the developments that are being considered. Uh, right now, for the most part, the projects are in the very, very early stages of development. But it takes school districts a, a little bit of time also to prepare for these types of enrollment increases. The state editor approval process can be a matter of months to many, many, many weeks, several months. So there's a process that the board and the district, uh, has to follow as well. That runs generally parallel, but we'd like to be ready before the students arrive. You bet the next slide. So pension costs, the contribution is increasing to nine point eight percent. That's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in, in real dollars. Health insurance is going up by about a point and a half for the coming school year, which, which is a, a modest increase. Tom, I think three percent is where they've been over the past couple of years. And now how is our budget allocated? Well, on the next slide, we'll see this. And now how is our budget allocated? Well, on the next slide, we'll see this. Grab, I'm sorry, the key components of the budget. First, so before we get into that piece of it, I just want to talk about. The, the budget keeps all of our programs intact. That's first and foremost, all of our programs stay intact, we're looking at a full in-person reopening for September. So welcoming our students back, making sure that we're positioned to meet the needs of the students once we welcome them all back in September. But actually, even before that, we're working through the spring. But now with another budget cycle, we're working through preparing the needs for the needs that we anticipate in September as well. Class sizes will be maintained or reduced, we are not going to increase class sizes. Health and safety supplies, I mentioned these earlier, there are some that are one-time expenses, the barriers are a one-time expense. The, the devices that spray the electric static solutions are one-time expenditures. However, the solution used for those devices are recurring cost and some of the disposable equipment, the gloves, the masks. The gowns and the health office, those are all recurring, the hand sanitizers. So we have a gallon-sized hand sanitizer in every room. There are three hundred and fifteen rooms in the district, that's three hundred and fifteen gallons of hand sanitizer at a time that we're replenishing. So just to give some context to the. That last bullet, you know, the next slide. Also talks about, talks to the instructional and social emotional support that we know we're needing to and continue to provide to our students. We have, the board has been terrific in their support of this effort to ensure that we're staffed. In a way that can help us to meet the needs of our students. And then contingency resources to offset the enrollment growth and, and the needs that we anticipate that we'll see in September. On the next slide now, you'll see how the budgets allocated. We're a people, industry, education, just inherently is a people-driven business, which is why salaries and benefits account for. Seventy-five cents of every dollar that we expend here. And then the rest of the budget plays out. As noted. You got the next slide, just for some numbers here, what we're proposing is a one point forty percent budget to budget increase. That will result in a tax rate increase in Yorktown of about one point nine five percent. Now, could it, depending on state aid, I, I don't know what the outcome will be because we don't have the stated numbers. So I don't anticipate it being higher than one point nine five. And it quite potentially could be just a little bit lower depending on what we receive with regard to state aid. But we won't know that for at least a week's time at this point, at least a week's time. And then the other tax rates are there. I just want to share a history, history of fiscal responsibility of our school district. If you look back, these are the tax levy increases in Yorktown, I just want to clarify that and qualify this in Yorktown. And. If you look at two of the five years. There was actually a tax rate decrease in two of the five years, that's not a very common phenomenon in schools. It's the board's profound sensitivity to taxpayers. That resulted in this and while still committing yourselves to the students and still committing to what the students need. So we're at a one point nine five tax rate increase for this coming school year. And I believe that we've struck that balance to really demonstrate. Our fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers, our sensitivity to the taxpayers. And balance that with our commitment to the children and to make sure the children have the programs and the support that they need. To be successful. That you know the next slide. Just a quick note about STAR. For STAR, the program's continuing, I just want our community to understand the district does not oversee the STAR program. It's not our program, it's not something that, that we have oversight over. There, there is a rebate program, that's what it has been historically. However, in some instances, there's now a direct check that gets mailed to the homeowner. So the STAR discount may not be reflected in your most recent tax bill. However, if that's not the case and you still qualify for STAR, you likely have received a check in that amount directly to you. So I just wanted to share that, it's not that the schools increased their taxes, it's not, I received my tax bill. And I said, whoa, wait a minute, I, I wrote this budget with Tom, I, I know what's in it, I know how much this thing was going up by. And then I realized that there, there is a check that I had received to offset that difference. So I just wanted to share that I, I received a question or two about. How high the taxes had gone and I just shared that with STAR, you may have received a check directly to you. And it's not reflected as a direct credit on your bill. So I share that just as a point of clarification. You got next slide, at the last board meeting, the board had a very in-depth conversation about the location of the vote. And you were centered, essentially, my interpretation is you were centered on three things. Safety for students and staff in our schools. Safety of the election workers. And you wanted the voters to be able to access the voting site, you wanted it to be convenient and accessible for our voters. So with that, I just want to share with the board some pictures of French Hill, we, we're proposing that the vote be there. There's the wanting of French Hill, here's a better view of the wanting of French Hill, we talked about the possibility of having the vote outside, weather permitting, circumstances permitting. We can, should that be the will of the board, we can do that. The other option is inside of French Hill, this is a view of the cafeteria as of last week. And there's another view of the cafeteria as well, it, it has substantial size. It, it has ample room for us to house the boat there. It's accessible to anyone who, who has any difficulty walking, there's accessibility there. So the cafeteria, I believe, will meet the needs of the board for this budget vote and election. And what I'll do, we bet is ask you to go to the, oh, the slide. And French Hill is a change in location, we'll be advertising that. We'll, we'll get the word out as best we can, it'll be in our mailings, it'll be in our legal notices. It will be in the budget newsletter that we're preparing, we actually just began that process of preparing the budget newsletter. And all of the communications that we have, we'll talk to the town to see if there are ways that they can help us to spread the word as well. With regard to the location of French Hill and again, the conversation for those on this meeting who missed the last meeting. Centered around safety and, and do we really want to introduce a thousand to two thousand people? Into one of our actively operating schools on a day that school is in session. And I think the board ultimately said if we had an alternative in French Hill, let's pursue, let's research and pursue that alternative. And certainly we do have an alternative, a viable alternative in French Hill. The date is May eighteenth, third Tuesday in May, like it always is, the poll location, seven AM to nine PM. I'm happy to take any questions and Tom and Lisa can be part of this discussion as well, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have as well.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, because you, one thing that I'm talking about state aid. There was a comment from a, or a question from a resident last week about Mondaire Jones Twitter. And how much we were getting, can you reiterate what we actually are getting and not what he actually tweeted, please?
Yeah, the, thank you for that point, that's a good point of clarification. So early on, there were tentative numbers that were released. And it showed us getting a disproportionately lower amount than some of the surrounding communities. Those numbers were revised, there were some communities that didn't have any allocation listed. So tho- those numbers were revised, I believe the number tentatively now. And again, it's all tentative, for me, it's all tentative until the checks in the district's bank account. So it's about eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, Tom, is that roughly eight thirty-five? And, and it's aligned to the Title One formula for the allocation of funds to school districts. So it would be commensurate with students, the percentage of students who, poverty in the community, the percentage of. The, the formula is, is a direct correlation to the Title One allocation of school districts. So I'm happy to, that we were able to clarify that, I'm happy that the numbers have been resolved, we did see a decrease from the tentative amount. But again, the tentative amount was just that and it was inaccurate.
And that, that amount of money we're getting has already been figured in by the state. It's not something we're going to get in addition to whatever the state has already allocated as our state aid portion, is that correct? We've already figured that in?
So Tom, I'll let you speak to that.
With the, and then we're currently using the budget, the governor's budgeted state aid because it's the only numbers we have. In that scenario, this num- these numbers are not extra monies. They're deducted from the state aid, so. In the two proposals being floated by both chambers of the legislature in Albany. The case would be different, but again, we don't have the final budget, so we can't really speak to it.
Okay, thank you. Anthony, did you have any questions? You're muted, Anthony, Anthony, you're muted.
I know that was me trying to unmute. No, thank you.
Freshme?
I'm good, thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thanks.
Pete?
No, I'm good too.
All right, I just want to reiterate. We've all seen the budget multiple times in many different iterations. And it's all available for the community if they have any questions whatsoever about it. And we will have future meetings where the board can actually discuss different parts of the budget if we want to make any changes to your budget. Because it's now officially ours. So if there's no further questions, oh, can you just talk about the oil contingency, you said you're going to mention that again?
Yes, yes, Tom, I'll pass it over to you, we did an in-depth analysis on our end between our director of facilities and, and Tom. And, and we went through and Tom, you can speak to the conclusion.
Where we, we did go back, take a look at consumption in an average year. Which is subjective because you never know what the temperature variations are in particular, but. Were in the use of the buildings, but in the non-COVID year, we looked at the average consumption. And what that implied for the budget, which is about two dollars and eleven cents a gallon. And based on our conversations with the financial advisory committee, we concluded that. Given where analysts think the price of oil is going, the number we have in the budget should suffice to be able to absorb. Any increase in the commodity price that is seen by analysts moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Pete, you were wondering, had many questions about that, are you still, are you okay with that?
I'm fine, Jackie, actually, Tom and, and I corresponded during, during. From the last meeting and they have a great plan in place for it. So what, I mean, I think our biggest thing is we're limited on what we can do to mitigate our risk. And they're doing everything they possibly can, so I'm, I'm, I feel good about it.
Terrific, okay, thank you. So if there's no other questions, I guess we can move on, thank you guys. Up to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March first and the March eighth meetings?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for February two thousand and twenty-one?
So moved.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? A motion to approve the claims order report for February two thousand and twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Motion to approve the extra classroom activity report for February?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Opposed? And a motion to approve these Yorktown Central School District calendar, school calendar for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Up to personnel. On recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have appointments, part-time appointments, unpaid leave of absence, resignation for the purpose of retirement. And under classified personnel, we have permanent appointments and additions to the substitute list.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Business office, can I have a motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
A motion to approve the Orange Olster Boses March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one letter of agreement for the Yorktown Central School District's record management needs. As per the project outlined in the letter.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
A motion to approve the following contract for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools and other districts. For the twenty twenty-one school year, this is for Katona and for Scarsville. All, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
A motion to approve the bid corp, to, to approve the bid cooperatively in the bids for the. This just makes sense, the general commodities and services issued by Hutten and Mordred Westerstabose as stated below.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? We already did that one. A secret resolution, type two negative declaration, whereas the Board of Education, the Yorktown Central School District. Is proposing a district-wide improvement capital project consisting of installation of air conditioning. In large occupied spaces such as cafeterias and gymnasiums in district buildings and incidental work and costs related there to the proposed action. And I'm going to go on, therefore being resolved that the Board of Education, the Yorktown Central District, School District determines that the proposed action. Is a type-two action pursuant to section six seventeen point AC one. And or eight of the secret regulations and will not have any significant environmental impacts. The contact person for the Yorktown Central School District is Dr. Ronald Hatter, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ron, can you just explain why we're doing this, please?
Absolutely. So the board steering committee has been on a multi-year journey and looking at the facility needs that we have as a school district. And part of the facility, facility needs that were identified in this process. Were for the gymnasium at the high school, we've identified some other areas throughout the school district as part of our capital reserve. And the last area for this capital reserve that the board identified or the steering committee identified with, obviously, the board's support. Are air conditioning for large group spaces, our gymnasiums, our cafeterias. I will tell you that the temperatures have exceeded ninety, ninety-five degrees in those spaces. And it's a month of September has been hot, that, that's where those temperatures have exceeded ninety to ninety-five degrees. Actually been during September. May and June can be equally as hot in those spaces and also we want the ventilation and the air to be able to be moved in a way where we're cooling the air as well. So there's a, an inherent health benefit with the air conditioning and the filtering that we're able to provide in a new system to these spaces. And it gives us such versatile use of the spaces for the warmer months of the year, which are generally, or it's September. A, June, it provides us with some wonderful options, it also provides us with the opportunity to use those facilities for summer programming as well. Because that had not been a consideration prior to these, prior to this project. So I thank the board, I thank the steering committee for their foresight and, and their attention to this. Because this is something that, that really is a need, we don't have auditoriums in our elementary schools. We don't have gathering spaces outside of the gyms and cafeteria. So it's not that we ha- it's not like we have an ancillary space or an additional large gathering space that we can use if we're going to bring the school together for an assembly. And I really do hope that the time where we're going to bring school together for assemblies is around the corner in this pandemic. So having the facilities to do that in, in a safe way, in a comfortable way for our children, I, I believe is of the utmost importance.
And this is the first step, we have to ask actually for permission to take the money, the last money out of the capital reserve.
Yeah.
In order to be able to plan for the summer of twenty-two.
Correct, in order for us to proceed, these are not happening this summer. This summer, the renovations are focused on the high school gymnasium, looking at all the different projects that are associated with that facility. In order for us to proceed, and I, I do want to, I don't want to complete this with the tax and the budget, these monies have already been allocated. These monies have already been authorized by our voters for deposit to the capital reserve fund. However, we're required to seek voter approval to withdraw the monies for use. And we do have to withdraw those monies for use a year in advance. Because in order to go out and do the bidding processes and go through all of the requirements for the state education department approvals. We have to have the money source secured and that money source is not secured until the voters vote to approve the withdrawal of the funds. So your vote to, the community's vote to withdraw the funds has no bearing on tax rate in the budget presentation. That I delivered earlier this evening.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Those, thank you. Be it resolved that the following proposition would be placed on the ballot at the annual district meeting of the voters of Yorktown Central School District to be cut, come up on May eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Capital project proposition. Shall the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District, Westchester County, New York, be authorized to construct improvements to the district buildings? In the nature of installation of air conditioning in the large occupied spaces. Spaces such as cafeteria and gymnasium. Such improvements include original equipment, machinery, apparatus, and ancillary or related work required in connection therewith. At a maximum estimated cost of four million dollars and the amount of four million dollars shall be transferred from the buildings. And facilities improvements capital reserve fund to the capital fund for such purpose and be further resolved. That the district clerk is authorized and directed to cause this proposition to be published in the legal notices. For the annual meeting, district meeting in the designated newspaper in accordance with section two thousand and four of the educational law.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? I oppose. Budget vote and election location be resolved at the Board of Education hereby changes the location of the polling place. Two thousand and twenty-one annual meeting, the budget vote and the election of board members from the Hansik Elementary School Gymnasium to the cafeteria at the French Hill Elementary School located two thousand, two thousand and fifty-one Baldwin Road, Yorktown Heights, New York.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And this is the notice of the annual meeting, a motion approved the twenty twenty-one school budget vote and election, election. Legal notice as stated below.
All moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Placements, a motion to approve the placements for March twenty-second as listed below.
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those. Vendor amendments, a motion for the attached amendments, the following vendor agreements that were originally approved at the August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty meeting for the twenty twenty-one school year. That are listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to be resolved that the Board of Education is hereby approve the settlement and release agreement in regard to student alt ID seven zero zero four seven seven six, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of school. Is authorized to execute the settlement and release agreement on behalf of the district.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gift grants and donations, a motion to approve the following gift grant and donation with gratitude at the Yorktown High School, sixteen dollars for. New York Life, Your Cause Employee Match Program, and two hundred dollars from Robert Reddickham for the John Manetzia Memorial Fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
We are up to public comment, if there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak, you can raise your hand now, we just asked that your screen name match the name you're going to give us. Does anybody want to speak? No, Avette, did anybody email anything in?
No, I didn't receive anything.
And we're going to go to board comment, Pete?
Um, just that to Ron, Tom, Lisa, the whole administration. The the budget process, though I know it it was. A lot of work for you and your teams, it it was very well done this year, in a very challenging year that we know, so thank you. That's all I got, Jack.
Freshme.
I'm good, thanks, Jackie.
Cheryl.
Want to say welcome back to all of our kindergartners tomorrow. What a wonderful second first day of school and and thank you to our staff for making this happen, it's very exciting, I can't wait to hear about it and see some pictures, so thank you to everyone for making this happen.
Anthony?
No, thank you.
Okay, I just, I I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work, for everything you've done, and I echo Cheryl's sentiments. Happy first, second day of school tomorrow, we're really, really excited to start this re-entry process for all of our students, it's going to be a great day, so I want to see lots of smiles on lots of people. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything? We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody.
Thanks, everybody, good night.
Have a good night, everyone.